Welcome, everybody, to our formal session. It's nice to see some nice folks out in the gallery. And we call this meeting to order. And the first thing we're going to do is have Pastor Marlon King from First Church of Nazarene come up and do the invocation.
Our kind, gracious, merciful, loving heavenly Father, we are grateful that you are with us every moment of the day. But we ask that your presence would be sensed in this chamber, that you would empower these servant leaders who have been elected and placed in their position of leadership by your hand to make wise decisions for this community, and that all of those who are a part of the gallery and may, some may have an opportunity to speak, may we be guided by your Spirit. May our minds and hearts be calmed with your presence, and may we make those suggestions and conversations that are beneficial to our community and that lift you up. We trust you, and we pray that you would be present until the very last gavel snap. We pray this in your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. And now if we have a moment of silence, and if I may request that we acknowledge the passing of a dear friend of Virginia Beach, Dr. Clancy Holland, who served with distinction for many years as a council member, mayor, and a state senator, and just a great and marvelous human being. A moment of silence. Thank you. And now we ask Cub Scout Pack Number 493 to come up and lead us in the pledge.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And each of you, come on right up here. We're going to give you a city seal for doing what you did. Let's give them a hand. Wasn't that great? You got it. Thank you. That was really cool. Good stuff. All right. We have the roll call?
All present.
Okay. At this point, I ask for a motion for the certification of the closed session.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The vote is open. By a vote, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. By a vote of ten to zero, you have certified the closed session and been in accordance with a motion to recess.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of October 17, 2023, and the special formal sessions of October 24, 2023? Do I have a motion?
Second.
The vote is open.
Thank you.
Thank you. By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay. Thank you. Now it's time to honor somebody. Could you have folks from the Hampton Roads Soccer Council come forward? Yeah, please come on right up to the podium. Because you get to talk after. That's kind of cool.
Long time no see.
And we're proud to have Councilmember Worth Remick, if you'd be so kind to read it.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome, folks, and thanks for staying around all day. And congratulations again on your presentation earlier today. Tonight, this resolution is to pretty much make the same proclamation that you talked about today, so I'll go ahead and read it. This is a resolution on behalf of Virginia Beach City Council. Whereas original visionary and Board President Michael Barrett, along with Hampton Roads Soccer Council Board President Greg Seifrees, Shelley Kahn, and current President Carlton Harwood have put in tremendous effort to, and then evolve, the Hampton Roads Soccer Complex and lead the Hampton Roads Soccer Council Board of Directors. And whereas Dick Whalen, the founder and visionary of the North American Sand Soccer Championships, hosted here in Virginia Beach, spent 25 years dedicating his efforts to grow the sport of sand soccer in America, created the U.S. Open, providing opportunities for local athletes and welcoming 100,000 guests throughout the weekend annually. And whereas the North American Sand Soccer Championships was created and continues to be a primary funding provider for the Hampton Roads Soccer Complex and has generated over $6 million towards developments and enhancements. And whereas the Dick Whalen Soccer Scholarship provides $10,000 annually to Virginia Beach high school seniors that have positively impacted their community and have excelled in both the classroom and on the field. And whereas the North American Sand Soccer Championships spans nearly 30 oceanfront blocks, builds 64 soccer fields, and has generated over $200 million in economic impact for the city of Virginia Beach over the past 30 years, last 30 years. And whereas the Hampton Roads Soccer Complex opened in 1997 and has provided a safe, professionally maintained facility for 25 years with an estimated 10 million athletes, spectators, referees, and supporters, I'm going to add parents as well, through the facility. And whereas the Hampton Roads Soccer Council's four affiliate soccer clubs, Beach FC, Over 30 Soccer League, Southeastern Virginia Women's Soccer Association, and the Virginia Rush provide excellent year-round programming development and opportunities for over 8,000 youth and adults to enjoy soccer. And whereas the Hampton Roads Soccer Complex and the North American Sand Soccer Championships have provided a training ground for many teenagers to become referees and learn confidence, competence, and responsibility as a first job. And whereas the Hampton Roads Soccer Complex serves as an outlet for camaraderie and friendships, mental health improvements, and healthy, long-time, active living and lifestyles. And whereas the Hampton Roads Soccer Complex has served as a tourism-generating facility and local community-building asset for 25 years. And whereas the current Hampton Roads Soccer Council Board of Directors, Officers, President Carlton Harwood, Vice President Michael Wagner, Vice President Phil Melanick, Treasurer Karen Knott, and Secretary Corey Dillon have been instrumental in shaping the growth and impact and direction of the Hampton Roads Soccer Council for the last five years. And the last whereas, whereas the Hampton Roads Soccer Council Board of Directors, Affiliate Soccer Club Leadership, and Key Staff, Matt Baines, Nick Lobes, Adam Dixon, Travis Ansel, Gina Kohler, Matt Whalen, and Lauren Bland, the Hampton Roads Soccer Complex and North American Sand Soccer Championships have positively impacted the Virginia Beach community, been tourism drivers, and improved the quality of life for residents. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Virginia Beach City Council pause in its deliberations to recognize the Hampton Roads Soccer Council for their leadership and their efforts to grow the sport of soccer, adopted by the City Council of Virginia Beach, the 14th Day of November, 2023, and present duly signed by each member of Virginia Beach City Council with a copy spread upon the minutes of this meeting. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'm going to take a thousand photos.
Thank you so much for the proclamation this evening, and also thank you for giving us so much of your time this afternoon to tell our story. We're really proud of our 25-year history at the Hampton Roads Soccer Complex and truly looking forward to and proud of the 30th North American Sand Soccer Championships this June. It's a team effort. You see the folks behind me represent board members, staff members, affiliate club members. Although there are six of us standing here, we represent, as we said, 8,000 athletes that play throughout our facility year-round. So thank you for your support. We appreciate the recognition today, and we look forward to continuing to positively impact our community and making you all proud. Thank you.
A sincere thank you from a grateful city. Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you all. That was very nice. Okay, moving on to public hearings. First one, vacation easement for 20 feet, public access easement at 2454 Starfish Road.
We have several speakers. The first speaker is Todd Solomon. Is Todd here? Oh, hi. After Mr. Solomon is Lisa Lettig.
That's close enough.
You'll just wait one second, ma'am. Mr. Solomon's first. Thank you.
Hey, Todd, how you doing?
Good evening. It's nice to be back. My name is Todd Solomon. I've been a 30-year resident of Cape Story by the Sea, the Offshore Drive in the Bayfront area. I'm here tonight to ask that you do not approve this relocation of easement in its current state. My understanding is that next week you'll be voting on this, so you have an opportunity to change this easement, this request. Approving this easement swap means that the city's going to take responsibility for the new placement or the new ramp, its placement and its design, as shown in your Exhibit B in your package. I believe, we believe, that this new design, the perpendicular design that stretches out towards the bay is the wrong design. History has proven on Sandalwood Road, which the city had built a handicap ramp there that got washed away with a Northeastern and had to be replaced, that designs that go out towards the water tend to get washed away in our Northeasters. We don't have enough beach. So the suggestion would be is to make this a parallel design. Westminster already has a parallel ramp on their own property. They could make one on this. Now that the restaurant is completely torn down, they've got the space that they can make a parallel design. That would bring the ramp 50 foot back away from the water. If that can't happen, and they're not willing to make that relocation and that design, I would suggest that the city then require, maybe some of the lawyers in the city can draw up the agreement to require this, that Westminster maintain that ramp in perpetuity forever, provide the maintenance, the upkeep, and the liability for it, since we all know it's probably going to get washed away at one point in time in the next couple of years with a Northeastern. So before you do that, be physically responsible. Physical responsibility, I think, is what you all run on, so do the right thing to make it either parallel or don't require us to pay it back every time it gets washed away. Thanks.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lisa Lettig. And then Lawrence Benson.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Lettig. I am a 32-year resident of Starfish Road, and I am the president of the Lynn Shore condominium HOA, and I am speaking on behalf of all the residents of my HOA to oppose closing our beach access at Starfish Road. First of all, a public access should always, should never be closed unless there is no other alternative. Westminster has admitted they have a Plan B, which does not involve closing this access. So because of that, this should be a very easy decision for all of you to make. Just deny the request. Let them go with their other plan. You should not have to decide between the rights of the public and the residents and a corporation, who gets more than the other. It's just not fair to city council. It's not fair to the citizens or the public. My biggest question is, why would we inconvenience the public and the residents, thousands of people use that access every week, tens of thousands during the summer? Why would we inconvenience them for a handful of people who say they don't want to walk through a parking garage? It just doesn't make sense. Second, the pier is remaining. That pier becomes a physical barrier when we have high winds, persistent high northeast winds, or a storm offshore. We have had four times since September of 2023 where the tide has come up so far that it's actually washing under the pier, and you cannot get west of the pier. The third thing is perception. With the closure of this beach access, that means there is no public access in the entire front of Westminster Canterbury, and that leads to the perception that it's becoming a private beach. The fact that Westminster is remaining the stairwell at the bulkhead to the beach further enhances that perception. I have had conversations with Westminster residents, and they have all told me they can't wait for this to close, so they have a public beach, and then they point to some crabbers and fishermen and say, so they can't come down here anymore. It's a public beach. Everybody should be able to enjoy it. The biggest thing that I was kind of surprised at is that city council was unaware of the residents' opposition to closing this. I have been fighting this since 2019, and I will continue to fight it until a final decision is made by you fine folks. In closing, this really should be-
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lawrence Benson. After Mr. Benson is John Wolfe.
Good evening.
Evening. Thank you all for your time. Got it. Gentlemen, can you hold that so I can talk to it? So my name is Lawrence Benson. I'm with Kim Lee Horn. I'm the civil engineer of record on the project, and I just wanted to voice support. As a member of the design team involved, obviously, in the design and the permitting of this, of this accessway, we totally understand the community's concerns, and we appreciate them voicing them. I would just encourage everybody to read the actual item. There's a stipulation that the new access be, you know, granted and accepted by the city before the existing one can close, so we're not suggesting that we're going to close it without access. But I just wanted to point out a couple things about the design that we landed on. So first point is, we've, did not design this in a vacuum, obviously. We've had a lot of coordination with review agencies, permitting agencies. The route that we ended up with achieves an ADA compliant pathway, which is better than what the existing access provides today. It's the most efficient layout for the space that we have available to do this. It is the least impact on the environment, with the least impact to the dunes, and no impact on adjacent property, beach fringe, by going straight out. Also wanted to just note, we have all of the permits in hand to build this structure. We've gone through city plan review. Local wetland board approved the project unanimously. That was appealed. We had to go through VMRC. They voted unanimously to uphold the local wetland board decision, and so, you know, we feel pretty confident that this has been reviewed and is approved and meets the standards that it needs to, to be constructed. The entire accessway is designed to be one and a half feet times the tide range, so essentially that means it's inland enough that the VMRC did not have jurisdiction over this. The stairs will not be emptying out into mean-high water. Certainly, if there's a large storm event, large storm surge, I would encourage people to not go out on the beach. This should not be, the beach should not be open in that event. There's, you know, there's going to be situations where there are portions of this that the tide is lapping up against it. That's going to happen. I think that's something that is going to be, you know, it would be impossible to design against. And then lastly, the team that is part of designing this has a lot of experience designing beach accessways, done several of them in Sandbridge, and the point is, we've got a lot of experience to reinforce the, the design that we're using here. We've sort of been able to take lessons learned from each step and build a design that is going to be, you know, honestly, the most storm-resistant access in the city. And I want to mention one other piece. The owner has elected to increase the design, the design wind speed for the entire project to basically match what city emergency services uses for their critical infrastructure design. So they're going above and beyond with the accessway. And in closing, I'm confident that this will be a benefit to the public-
Thank you very much.
Stand by for questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next speaker is John Wolfe. After Mr. Wolfe is Ardell McCoy.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Wolfe, and I'm a resident of Westminster Canterbury at 3100 Shore Drive, Virginia Beach. I'm here today to urge you to approve the request to vacate the existing public beach access easement that runs through the middle of our previously approved senior housing building development. This is an expansion of our existing campus, which is desperately needed as there is a major shortage of senior living housing in Virginia Beach. The safety of the residents of Westminster Canterbury is my top priority. As a resident, I can tell you firsthand that the existing public beach access easement running through a new building poses a serious security risk to our residents. Over the past several years, there have been 30 documented incidents of trespassing on the existing campus. These incidents include unlawful break-ins, assaults on our security officers, and intoxicated trespassers in our campus garage. It is imperative that we minimize the chances of one of our residents attempting to access their car in the garage and having to face one of these trespassing incidents. Additionally, this is not a safe situation for the public, who desire to reach the beach and must travel through the building where vehicular traffic is present, both entering and exiting this new campus building. These are a few examples of the many security concerns that we have about the existing public beach access easement and its location in the middle of Westminster's property. Relocation of the beach access is the obvious and desirable remedy. Westminster is constructing a new public beach access on the property line, which is a mere steps away from the existing easement. It will be finished before construction of the new building starts. This new access will be just as convenient and safer for the public to use, plus it will not pose a security risk for our residents. The planned new access is a significant upgrade from what is currently available and will be handicap accessible as well. I urge you to approve the request to vacate the existing public beach access easement. This is a matter of safety for the residents of Westminster Canterbury and all others in the public in the garage area. We deserve to feel safe in our new homes. Thank you for your time and consideration of this request.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Ardell McCoy, and then Ben Uncle.
My name is Ardell McCoy, and I am a resident at Westminster Canterbury. As you know, a senior living community located here in Virginia Beach. I want to talk a little bit about from being the senior there. Westminster Canterbury is a vibrant community of seniors who are actively involved in the life of Virginia Beach. And yes, we are older. It'll be the last residence address for most of us, but we are not just sitting around. We are your volunteers at voting precincts, at museums, at performances like the Sandler, the Zidler, Little Theater, Mocha. And we do special events at Lynn Haven now and at schools. We hold forums with special guests for the benefit of our residents and for the public and families. Our families are spread throughout the city and are part of the extended family of Westminster. Now Westminster prioritizes the safety and security of us residents, and so we are constructing that new public beach access online. But I want to say that we are part of the fabric of the city of Virginia Beach, and we are your neighbors. We're your friends, and we are your family. We are the people who have helped build the city and make it a great place to live. We deserve some safeguards that you do when people are coming to where you live, and I'm sure if you had a detached garage, you would not want people accessing the next street between your house and your garage. So we urge you, as seniors, to approve the request to vacate the existing public beach access easement. This is a matter of safety for us residents of Westminster, and we deserve to feel safe in our homes. Now, I want to thank you, but I also want to encourage you during your next deliberations to let your conscience be your guide and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ben Uncle. And after Mr. Uncle is Bob Widener.
Hey, good evening.
Thank you. Good. Mr. Mayor, members of the city councils, nice to be back before you. The last time I was before you, I think I was giving you an update on our hospice house, the hospice house that we're involved in, and that's still on track for the end of January. We look forward to that ribbon cutting. As I say, my name is Ben Uncle. I'm the CEO of Westminster Canterbury. With me today is the Chair of our Board of Trustees, Lisa Smith, in the front row beside me. And if any of everybody who's come today from Westminster Canterbury, if you could just stand up, we won't have you all speak, but just stand. These are folks who have come to support this request today. We are a church-sponsored, faith-based, nonprofit life plan community. That means we are a retirement community that has all levels of care, independent living, assisted living, and nursing. We have served this city for over 41 years. In the late 1990s, growing demand for our services required us, excuse me, to expand and build our West Tower. You helped us do that. The city helped us do that. We come today to ask your help again in serving more of our citizens and serving them in a safer manner. I won't repeat the testimony that's already in the record from the conditional use permit hearing that you held two years ago, but I would remind you, except to remind you, that we are the third most underserved metro area in the nation for our type of housing. The Silver tsunami is coming, and I ask you to help us, help them, and to help the city be better prepared for that. To do that, we need to relocate this easement and maintain our access-controlled community. Older men and older women are justifiably more nervous about the safety of their surroundings over time. Our parking areas and road entrances facing roads have always been gated and had access control, as do our neighboring associations, by the way, have gated and access-controlled areas. Residents return home to park at all hours. Many walk through the ground floor of our garages to get to grass to toilet their pets at all hours. So it's a serious safety concern that will frighten others to have a 24/7 public thoroughfare going through our garage. Therefore, at our own expense, we have proposed a better accessway, which is only 59 steps to the east. If you remember eating at the Lynn Haven Fish Restaurant, you remember it's a much longer walk from the back to the front door. This dimension is just the narrowest dimension, the width of the parking lot, 59 steps away. The new access is far superior to the old. It will have an ADA ramp for disabled persons and baby strollers. It'll have bump outs for beach buggies and strollers that meet each other to be able to move to the side, and it'll even have a footwash station.
Thank you very much. Most appreciated.
The last speaker. The last speaker is Bob Widener.
Good evening. Mayor Dyer, and honorable members of the city council. My name is Bob Widener, and my address is 3100 Shore Drive here in Virginia Beach. First of all, my wife, Joni, and I would like to thank each of you for your service to our wonderful city. We know that it can sometimes be a thankless job, but it is one that is greatly appreciated. I stand before you tonight asking for your approval to our request to move the existing public beach access easement that currently runs through the middle of our upcoming new Bay Tower, a project that has received full approval for construction from the city of Virginia Beach. The start of construction for this project to begin is in the very near future. Upon realizing that the current beach access easement would create an awkward obstacle course for all residents of Shore Drive who may use it, with users having to negotiate a parking deck and then through an access door to the beach, Westminster has adjusted their plans to provide not only an easement, but also the construction of this new access to our easternmost property line. Although it is merely a few steps from the current easement, it will actually be closer for most of our resident neighbors for their use. The new beach access would be a major improvement over the existing access. The new beach access would provide a direct access from Starfish Road to the beach. It will be fully landscaped with benches placed along the way, and it will have a full ADA compliant ramp at the end. This will not only provide access for special needs that the current access does not provide, but will also make it easier for all residents accessing the beach with strollers, beach carts, and other items that are difficult to navigate down a traditional staircase. Another key detail in our request is that Westminster will maintain.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers for that public hearing, sir.
Okay, moving on to the next public hearing, number two, license to use the property, Starbucks Corporations at 31 Ocean, 241 Laskin Road.
No speaker, sir.
All right. Number three, lease property, approximately 9.7 plus or minus acres of land located at 1401 Southern Boulevard.
No speaker, sir.
Number four, appropriation of revenue, $20,095,296 for sale of property to Dominion Energy for various transportation projects and tree mitigation.
We have two speakers. The first speaker, Todd Solomon.
Ms. Ellman, Ms. Henley. Okay.
Thank you. I do have a comment if I could. I would appreciate it if we would delay allocating this money until we have had a presentation from Dominion Energy about their, their project, and I know they're going to be starting imminently because I, I think it's important that we know what the impacts are going to be to the neighborhoods along the way, and we might want to keep some of this money in a fund that would be able to make whatever kinds of repairs might be necessary. I don't think we can really predict right now. I know Dominion Energy is going to be doing the project, but it's going to be a major impact on these neighborhoods, and I just have a feeling there are going to be issues that they're going to need to have some work done to maybe improve a situation. And until we really know what that is, I would like for us to hold back some of this money. So if we could just delay this until we can have a briefing from Dominion Energy, and I think they are willing to come next week if necessary, to give us some, some input into when they're going to be starting this project and what it might do, because this is going to very heavily impact those neighbors. I know that Ms. Wilson and I, and Ms. Wilson has a conflict, so I will look out for her neighborhoods, but I know those neighborhoods are going to be very heavily impacted, and and there might be some things that we could do to help.
Okay, Mr. Stiles, I guess the recommendation is that we delay this public hearing?
I would delay the allocation, I think.
Oh, the allocate, could we still have the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just delay the allocation until we can have a briefing.
Okay. Well, we'll go ahead with the public hearing today.
Mr. Solomon will be the first speaker, and then Mr. Walter Camp will be the second speaker.
Welcome back.
Once again, my name is Todd Solomon, 30-year resident of Cape Story, Shore Drive, in the Bayfront area. I'm here to support the plan. If I fully understand Ms. Henley, where you're coming from, and knowing what you need to know what you know before you can start distributing additional monies, but I support specifically in this plan, I support, I support the reallocation of the monies to the Phase Four and Phase Three Shore Drive projects. These safety projects, they've been on the books for 17 years. I know I worked with the city on Safety Task Force for Shore Drive, so we've on and off for 17 years, funded, unfunded, funded, unfunded. Unfortunately, Phase Four was unfunded recently. Phase Three, I thought was fully funded, but it looks like we're trying to get some more money to actually start that and finish it. So I think anything we can do to keep that moving is fantastic if we can keep some additional funding, and obviously, what you need to help out, those that will feel the brunt of the impact of this, the power lines and such, that's important also. But these are two or three very particular things for Shore Drive in the Bayfront area that we've been trying forever and ever to get. I know there's some sidewalks that could use a million dollars or so to help jumpstart that for safety reasons, so anything we could do to help that. But I also wanted to take a real quick minute, I believe, on the consent agenda coming up, there's also one that I'm not going to talk about, but there's a stormwater. I just wanted to say.
We got to stick to the agenda.
Sorry. Okay. But thank you again for finding these new sources, like the grants that came out for stormwater also, and these additional ways to find funding to help our projects. Thanks.
Thank you.
The next and last speaker is Walter Camp.
Hey, Walter, how you doing?
I'm doing great. This is a great thing to talk about. And again, my name is Walter Camp. I'm speaking here tonight as the Chairman of your Active Transportation Advisory Committee. We met yesterday, short notice, but the committee authorized me to come and make comments on this matter today. As you know, the city's comprehensive plan has had a bikeways and trails component since 1981, and since 1981, there has been a provision to use a portion of that Norfolk Southern Rightaway for what we now know as the Virginia Beach Trail. So we've heard a lot about 17 years or so many years. This is 42 years. There's a lot of things we need to get after that have been waiting. The ordinance that created our committee says that we are to serve as, as an advisory capacity to you with regard to implementation of the active transportation plan. So here is our advice with regard to that. Specifically, you charged us with focusing on the priority projects. Well, the priority project in the plan that city council adopted two years ago is the Virginia Beach Trail, and I could go on at length about its merits, but you know it. You have unanimously approved grant application after grant application as we've tried to fund this project. It's number one for a reason. It serves the whole city. With regard to why we need this money at this point, we have been diligently applying for grants for several years now, and many of you have come to me and said, how do we get some money for this thing? Our state sources are drying up with the smart scale change and the impediments we have with the TAP grant program. On the federal level, we got all the way to Secretary Buttigieg's desk on one of these things, but we just missed the cut. One of the problems is we're not fully engineered. Second, we don't have local skin in the game the way that they're perceiving it. Yes, we bought the rightaway. That was huge. But putting dollars in now for this engineering will help us get this ripened up and increase our scoring for grants. That's what's important here. With regard to the other projects in this proposal, you have assigned us the task of, I'll just read it, that we are to review all road construction projects and ensure that they're all constructed, improved, or maintained and are manner consistent with the active transportation plan. So we asked Mr. Jarman for Public Works to speak to our committee last month. He went over all the roadway projects, certainly agree with Todd. The number two priority out there after the Virginia Beach Trail is Shore Drive. Shore Three and Shore Four are primarily bike ped safety projects. They are less about moving cars. This is critical for implementation of the plan to move these dollars forward into this. The other projects, of course, have merit too. Pleasure House Road, Rose, Pleasure House Road, you have people walking in the street.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I feel compelled to speak up because if you read and watched the budget proceedings from this past May, District Nine took a very heavy hit on capital projects to include Shore Drive Phase Four and Pleasure House Road Phases One and Two. In fact, roughly eight and a half million dollars was redirected from Shore Drive Phase Four to complete other projects in our city, including the southern part of our city, whereas the, the folks of Shore Drive have been waiting for the last 20 years for sidewalks. And while I certainly respect and acknowledge the fact that there might be impacts to adjacent properties by virtue of these easements and the, and the power lines that will be going up, I know that we, as part of this money, I want to say $1.7 million is being set aside for tree mitigation. And these, the, the proposed appropriations here would bring Shore Drive Phase Four back 90% of what it would have been had, had the CIP from, from '23 been, been, been basically followed into, into this year, and we did not experience the delayed deferrals. As far as Pleasure House Road Phase Two goes, that would bring us to about halfway of where we would have otherwise been despite these delayed deferrals. So this, this is incredibly important for the, for the people along the Bayfront, including Shore Drive Phase Three, which is closer in time to construction, which is part of the reason why some of these delayed deferrals take, took place. I understand this is just the public hearing, but, but I am in no way, shape, or form okay with delaying any further these critical, not just pedestrian safety projects, roadway improvement projects, but these, these are, these are stormwater projects also is what they really are, that have ballooned from, in some cases, $13 million to $50 million projects. So, so I, I think we, we can't fund Shore Drive Phase Four or Pleasure House Road Phase Two or Shore Drive Phase Three fast enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Okay, then moving on to number five, fiscal year 2022, '23 beach city public school operating budget and capital improvement project appropriation for version funding and additional revenue from the Commonwealth of Virginia.
No speaker, sir.
Okay. Now we'll move on to a couple, public comment. Ordinance to approve, appropriate the fund balance of the Tourism Investment Fund and authorize the city manager to execute the settlement, transition, and termination agreement with the Virginia Beach Sports Center.
We have two speakers. One, the first speaker is Diana Howard, and then we have one Webex speaker.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Diana Howard. I'm the Chair of the Virginia Beach Tea Party, and I can't believe that we're going to be buying this out for $6 million. I mean, when we had the Sports Center built, we chose the ESM people because they had successful businesses elsewhere, like the, the Field House and the place up in Northern Virginia. So I was surprised to learn that they weren't performing well, even though the, this thing seems to be reverberating or something. Anyway, even though they complied with the contract with some discrepancies, right? The recommendation was for them to be put on like a six-month trial basis, and then if they didn't comply, then they would go on this. So maybe you've done that, I don't know. But one of the things that I found out when he did the audit and everything was that they don't have control over the money that is spent, you know, to rent the place. There's the Convention Visitors Bureau that does all the booking for all of the, for all of the events, right? So they're operating on a different idea. They're operating on filling it with as many events as they can to drive economic activity in the oceanfront, heads and beds, people at restaurants, buying stuff and, and that sort of stuff, not getting to the bottom line to be able to pay the bills, keep the lights on, pay for the employees, and actually make the place profitable. So are we really addressing the problem by getting rid of them, and who's going to run the place when we're not operating to actually make a profit? So those are my concerns. Thanks.
Hey, thanks a bunch. Good seeing you.
The last speaker is via Webex, Gary McCollum. Mr. McCollum, you are unmuted and may begin. Mr. McCollum, you are unmuted. You may begin, please.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Apologize, I'm actually at a Bible study tonight, but this was important. When I read the news about the Virginia Beach paying more than $6 million to terminate the current Sports Center contract, and then seeing Vice Mayor Wilson's response that it's been a disappointment, I think I'm quoting her correctly, and that we need to do a better job for the public, I, I could only conclude that, yes, it is disappointing, and I think you have failed us as taxpayers with this $6 million buyout and made the operator the scapegoat after they said repeatedly to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the CBB, and city management that CBB's first hole on the good dates put the operator at a disadvantage and left them with the scraps. The CBB's business model is to discount the facility on peak dates to entice sporting events to the oceanfront where hotels are already booked. I bet if CBB did their homework, they'll find that most sporting events come because of the availability of the facility and lodging affordability. Filling hotels at the oceanfront is secondary, but if the business model is to fill the hotels, then I say they need to have more skin in the game and adjust accordingly. It's also disappointing that the leadership of this council, who have combined 88 years of being on council, Mayor 20, Vice Mayor 22, Barbara Henley over 40, Mike Bellucci 6, all voted for this PPEA deal rather than letting the marketplace provide a solution. You did not see that the CBB did not live up to what they pitched, and you continued to spend taxpayer money without accountability. From your own report, CBB has underperformed at the Convention Center and now the Sports Center. Letting bureaucrats provide oversight of the facilities is an ongoing failure by the council, and you continue to ignore that this business model does not work. In the next budget, CBB should hire a true accounting team to make sure milestones are being met. Or better yet, this council should heed your auditor's recommendations. More importantly, maybe Councilman Taylor can get an answer to his question in the earlier session today. How many and how much of a discount have you provided to the folks who book at the Sports Center? Sports Center? I've been in business, and I've seen CEOs replaced for making bad decisions. I've seen military officers fired for poor judgment. In politics, leaders who are not good stewards of taxpayer dollars are voted out. Instead of a $6 million bailout, support fully utilizing the Princess Anne Athletic Commons, fix our rec centers, and maybe build those bikeways and trailways we've talked about for decades. Stop writing blank checks with taxpayer dollars. It's about accountability. Do the right thing. Don't vote for the $6 million. Rework the deal with the current operator, or if you provide the $6 million, CBB cannot be the transition management company. Let the current or new operator manage the market.
Thank you, Mr. McCollum. Time's up.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, let me read the speaker's policy first. I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on a single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by the council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will have a cumulative total of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have discussed to address. Finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussions and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the city council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for us to strive for stability and respect. Okay, any one item speakers?
Yes, Your Honor, we have two individuals who would like to speak on items on the consent agenda. The first individual is David Leader, who will be speaking on L4, a resolution to establish a 90-day festival committee or task force. David Leader, not here. Todd Solomon would like to speak on the L8 resolution for Westminster, the revenue bonds. Is that correct, Mr. Solomon? So this is for L8.
Welcome back.
Hello again. Should get paid by the item. Thank you. Once again, Todd Solomon, 30-year resident of Cape Story, off of Shore Drive in the Bayfront area. This is the resolution, the ordinance to issue these pass-through bonds for the Westminster Canterbury project that we were just talking about earlier. I oppose this request to issue these bonds. The last time this came up, they had $160 million requests for bonds that got passed through, but during that time I had asked if the city has the potential to charge a fee for these pass-through bonds. I understand that there's no impact to the bond rating for the city since these are pass-throughs, but other cities, specifically one I pulled up, Loudoun County, charges a fee to do this. So this $525 million request, along with the other two requests, now puts the total request up to $800 million that have gone to pass-through bonds. If you took Loudoun County's fee structure, that would be $800,000. They'd do a .1%, .01%, one basis point for doing the application, and then a maintenance fee, too. So $800,000, that could help, again, some of these projects, safety projects, running the Route 35 bus that many people may use in the area or even at Westminster Canterbury. That would help if they could do that. Again, I talked with the Virginia Beach Development Authority. I don't think they have a structure, they don't know of one, if they do, to charge these fees. I don't know how many more are coming down the pipe, you know, for doing these type of pass-through bonds. You could still make additional funding, additional money, thinking outside the box of ways that we can gather revenue into the city to help these type of projects. So I would suggest that you take a step back, don't miss this opportunity for this $800 million potential, and, you know, create a fee structure and have this be the first one. Thanks.
Thank you.
And Todd, the Development Authority goes, they do charge a fee.
Do you know what it is? Because they didn't, and the Treasury Department didn't, and the Finance Department didn't, that I all asked, so.
It is, but we do.
What is the fee?
We do charge a fee.
It's 1/8 of 1%.
Thank you.
Of the total? Okay. And that money goes?
To the authority.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers for the consent agenda.
Okay, if you can kindly do the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Under ordinance's resolutions, number one is the resolution to adopt the city's 2024 legislative agenda, with Mrs. Henley voting no on number three in that. Number two is the resolution to request the General Assembly to amend the city charter sections 3.01, 3.01, semicolon, 1, 3.02, semicolon, 1, 3.02, semicolon, 2, and 3.02. Number three, regarding implement the 10 single-member district election system, and this is with Mrs. Henley voting no. Number three is the resolution to request the General Assembly amend the city charter section 8.07 regarding the expand the membership of the Board of Equalization. Number four is the resolution to establish a 90-day festival task force requested by Vice Mayor Wilson, council members Berluci, Remick, Ross Hammond, and Schulman, and there is an alternate revised version that has an added member from the Minority Business Council. Number five is the ordinance to authorize acquisition of property in fee simple, either by agreement or combination, Ray the Lakes, Leshu, South London Bridge, Creek, Channels, and Gate Projects, CIP 10521. Number six is the ordinance to authorize the acquisition of easements, either by agreement or combination, Ray the Kemp's Lake Water Quality Improvement Project, CIP 10567. Number seven is the ordinance to authorize a dedication of an 8,798 square foot utility easement to Dominion Energy Virginia over city-owned property at Upton Drive, Nemo Parkway, Ray provide electrical service to the facility owned and operated by the Hospice House and with Wilson abstaining. Number eight is the resolution to approve the issuance of residential care facility revenue bonds by the Virginia Beach Development Authority and to exceed, not to exceed, $525 million regarding the Westminster Canterbury on the Chesapeake Bay, and also wanted to mention that there is a revised disclosure from Westminster Canterbury that's been received today. Number nine is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement to join the Eastern Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority, Ray to promote the city's economic growth and development. Number 10 is the ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of a 15-foot unimproved city-owned property right-of-way known as Ocean Shore Avenue, Ray to construct and maintain a gravel driveway and a concrete city-standard driveway apron and to encroach with a portion of city-owned public right-of-way known as First Landing Lane located at the front of 2592 Ocean Shore Avenue, and that's in District Eight. Number 12 is the ordinance to donate out-of-service police equipment to the police departments of Libby, Montana, South Miami, Florida, Wrightsville Beach, North Carolina, Newburgh, North Carolina, and Madison, Alabama. Number 13 is the ordinance to transfer 1.1 million from the Consolidated Grant Fund and Capital Projects, number 10589, Central Utility Grant Enhancements, ARPA, Ray to allow the city to proceed to construction on the project. Number 14 is the ordinance to transfer $185,425 from the General Fund and Reserve for Contingencies to the FY 2023/24 Voter Registration and Elections Operating Budget, Ray fund the January 9, 2024 special election. Number 16 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $362,408 from the State Compensation Board to the FY 2023/24 Commonwealth Attorney Operations Budget, Ray salary increases for eligible positions. Number 17 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $350,000 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to the FY 2023/24 Department of Human Services Operating Budget and authorize two full-time positions, Ray project for assistance for transitioning from homelessness. Number 18 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $257,500 from the 911 Service Board of the Virginia Department of Emergency Management to the FY 2023/24 Department of Emergency Communications and City Services Operating Budget, Ray staff recognition and retention efforts. Number 19 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate an additional $162,547 from the Virginia Military Commonwealth Infrastructure Grant Program and fund to the FY 2023/24 Police Department Operating Budget and transfer as pay-as-you-go funding for capital improvement project, number 10536, Creed's Training Center renovations. Number 20 is the ordinance to appropriate $150,000 in fund balance from the Police Federal and State Cease Asset Special Revenue Fund to the FY 2023/24 Police Operating Budget, Ray Police Recruitment.
Open the public hearing on planning?
Yes. Number one is the Whitney W. Elliott, Matthew Mancall and Robin, Whitney W. Elliott, Matthew E. Mancall, Robin A. Mancall, the Lyndy Eaton Golding amended and restated revocable trust, April 22, 1992, on a street closure as a one-half of an unimproved unnamed alley adjacent to the rear of 218 55th Street, and that is Unit B, District Six. Number two is the Whitney W. Elliott, Matthew Mancall and Robin A. Mancall, Whitney W. Elliott, Matthew E. Mancall, Robin A. Mancall, the Lyndon Eaton Golding amended and restated revocable trust, April 22, 1992, for a street closure, Ray a one-half of an unimproved unnamed alley adjacent to the rear of 219 54th Street, District Six. Number three is Evergreen Virginia LLC for modification of conditions, Ray motor vehicle sales, rentals, and repairs at 240 and 248 North Lynn Haven Road and 2865 and 2893 Virginia Beach Boulevard, District Three. Number four is Burnett Baum Development Corporation, RVB3 LLC for modification of proffering conditional use permit, Ray car wash facility and at 5453 Wesleyan Drive in District Four. And number five is Excel Fitness Virginia 9 LLC, going as Planet Fitness, General Booth Bull properties of Virginia Beach, Inc., for a conditional use permit regarding indoor recreation facilities at the 2336 Elson Green Avenue, District Five. That concludes it. So moved.
Motion. Does we have a motion second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yeah, Sabrina?
Yes. Item four, I four, I thought there was a more discussion on that.
Yeah, we're pulling it.
Okay.
We're pulling it.
In that case, I said.
Was it item four or no? Item 11.
I 11.
No, no, item 11.
I saw that.
Yeah.
I thought there was more discussion.
Item 11.
Yeah, item 11 is the one polled. Item four was the one that we revised it and gave the update.
Yeah, I saw that. Was there any other discussion about that?
Yes.
Yeah, please. Jennifer.
Sabrina, did you want to go?
I can, sure, sure. So what I conveyed in a workshop session was, since this is in relation to a festival task force, which I'm not against the issue, but what it says here is that this is a city-supported, to ensure city-supported festivals will be inclusive and appeal to diverse audiences with festivals held not only at the oceanfront but throughout the city. And so with that being said, we want to make sure we have diverse, people who represent diverse backgrounds or who are affiliated with putting on diverse festivals on this task force, because it's important, because you're going to be talking about and developing and evaluating criteria going forward with a commission at some point. And so it's important to have the right folks at the table, at the task force, to be involved in the discussions about how you want to proceed. And so I appreciate the Vice Mayor adding the MBC, but there was also some discussion about, should we have perhaps maybe district representatives, since this is all over the city? And I just wanted to bring that forth. Also, I understand when this was brought forth, council was away from City Hall, away from business, on vacation, and so I thought we'd have more discussion. Usually, you know, when you bring something up that impacts the city in this manner, you do have broader discussions after you submit it by email, and I appreciate the opportunity, but I do think more discussion needs to be had on this item.
Okay, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Wooton. So I was looking over the makeup of the, the proposed makeup of the task force, and even with adding the Minority Business Council, I'm counting six out of the 11 voting members are at the oceanfront resort. And this is a task force that's meant to provide input and insight into how we develop festivals going forward, not only at the oceanfront but throughout the city. And I'm not comfortable with this makeup because I understand that the information, the recommendations that they bring forward, it's not policy, but it can inform our policy. And I don't see that this is reflective or representative of the creative economy and the festival economy and the arts economy across our city. I think district representation would be improved, but I'm not comfortable voting for something. So I didn't realize this was on consent. I thought this was also polled, because with the current makeup, I'm not, I'm not supportive of a task force that has this much oceanfront resort representation. It feels out of balance. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Michael.
Mayor, I just want to take a moment to state as a co-sponsor of the resolution that, while I wholeheartedly agree with the goals, I do think there is some improvement we could make to the composition. And I don't know if that is district representation, which I've proposed previously, or, you know, another form of composition. I don't think this should come as a surprise to anyone who's been paying attention to this conversation, that my view on this is really informed by lived experience with festival planning in Virginia Beach and with partnership with organizations that plan festivals and events throughout the city. I do think that this task force has goals that are, that I think everyone is in agreement with, but I do think we could make, we have some room for improvement in the composition. Now, I think district representation, if the other co-sponsors of the resolution are agreeable, for me, would solve that, because I think we could curate, as we have with many other task forces and commissions, and I see my friends from the Cannabis Advisory Task Force here, that was a curated effort, where we really not only decided where, which areas we were looking for representation, but then we worked together, and Councilmember Wooton and, pardon me, I'm thinking about a different effort, but also on May 31, Councilmember Wooton and I worked together to very carefully shape a task force that was comprised of individuals from a variety of backgrounds and perspectives and experiences. I think if we move to district representation, we could achieve that goal if we work together, and that would really allow us the opportunity to create a festival task force here that we could meet those needs, both of the resort stakeholders and the areas that are most significantly and substantially. significantly and substantially and regularly impacted by community and large festivals. But also, we could get the type of representation that those of us who are in support, and I think we all are, but those of us who particularly are working with emerging community groups who want to have a presence in the community, who want to have city support, who for whatever reason haven't had access to that level of city support, we can make sure that their voices are represented. And that would be my preference.
Okay, Amelia.
I'm one of those who is also part of this, but listening to all the conversation, I'm moving to defer it until we have a chance to discuss it further.
Okay, so would the thing be to, you know, to pull this item from the consent agenda? Mark clarifying, you know?
Yeah, I think you need to pull it from the consent agenda.
Yeah, I think we have to pull it from the consent agenda.
So we'll remove that from the consent agenda, man, and we'll vote on everything else.
Thank you. And also, Vice Mayor, if, I did not hear you read L 15, that item, it has no speakers.
Okay.
And if I missed that, I apologize.
Okay, item 15?
L 15, so if you could maybe amend.
I have that as being pulled. I thought somebody.
There is no speakers on that. That's not pulled.
Okay.
Okay, well, then we can add L 15 for some reason. All right, we'll add number 15, the ordinance to accept and appropriate $25,144,014 in federal revenue to the FY 2023-24 Capital Improvement Program amongst four Eastern Shore Drive Drainage Improvement Capital Projects and Transfer $6,195,518 between four Eastern Shore Drive Drainage Projects.
Okay, so the idea that we're going to vote on the consent agenda with the addition of 15 added to the consent agenda as read and to pull the item four.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, the vote is open. Any other discussion?
One second.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Berlucy was the second.
Okay, all right.
The vote is open. By a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson, noting Councilmember Henley's no votes and Vice Mayor Wilson's abstention.
I would like to say something about number four. Several months ago, it was handed out about doing a festival commission, and then the staff wanted to do a task force instead for 90 days, and then that was recommended by staff, and that was sent out to all the council two weeks ago, and I asked for comments. And other than, I think, one council member, I really didn't receive any comments from anyone. So it's not like this was done hurriedly. This has been in the works for, for really a couple of months now. So sorry that people, maybe they didn't realize that it was coming, but we're glad to talk about it some more.
Okay, do you have a motion on this right now?
For number four?
Yeah.
I'd like to, so Patrick, you think we could have it by next week?
Have the.
Or should we defer it till the first week in December?
It's up to council. I think council is the one that desires to defer also. Council should determine what it needs to do to talk about it.
Yeah, you know, if I could recommend, it may not be a bad idea to, you know, to defer till December, and this way we could actually, you know, have at least a meaningful conversation before the vote.
And that way, I know it's a 90-day, and you wanted to have it done with the budget and all that, but the first week in December would work for you, correct?
Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor, whatever you all want to do works for me. Just to clarify, so when does council want us to actually place it on the agenda for you all to have a conversation? Do you want us to put it on next week's agenda?
Can I make a recommendation that, you know, we talk about it in the workshop next week, you know, just to get things ironed out a little bit and then move forward with the vote on December 1st?
December 5th.
The 5th.
Yeah. We'll defer till December 5th.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, you don't have a workshop next week. Remember, you had the election, so you have two voting meetings, and then next week is the five-year forecast, the joint meeting with the school board.
Okay.
So it might, we could move it to the 28th if that's okay with council.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be good.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, votes open.
One second, please. Yes, to defer till December the 5th. The vote is open. By a vote of nine to zero, you have deferred this item until December 5th.
Okay, now on to item number 11, ordinance to establish a special project, number 100667, Rudy Loop Park Development and Transfer $4 million from the Tourism Investment Fund to pay go funding procurement of design services.
We have one speaker, Diana Howard.
Hello again. Yeah, I don't think I'll pull this down this time. Anyway, no, I don't think we should pay $4 million to pay a design company to design a world-class park for $40 million to spend on it. I think when people voted, they seen the design that the Parks and Rec did, and I think that's what they voted on. And I certainly don't want a parking garage. How in the world do you get a surfboard down an elevator or down the stairs? Rudy Loop is one of the few places that you can drive by and can actually see the ocean, and we're going to like put a parking garage there. I don't like it. Anyway, I think it's a waste of money.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, at this point, is there a motion?
I'd move to approve, but I would like to say that if this is going to be a park for the people that are going to need to place the park, you know, not everybody can ride their bicycle or walk.
We'll have comment. Let's get to second, and then we'll open for discussion.
I'll second.
Okay, now open for discussion, please.
Okay. When Mr. DeHany talked about this this afternoon, he and also Mr. Kirschman said that what Parks and Rec did was just a concept, and they do not have the ability themselves to design a world-class park. When we discussed this with the council, there was a lot of conversation coming from council members that this is such a spectacular piece of property, most spectacular undeveloped property on the East Coast, that it really needed to have a very special designer. So I'm not sure that we need 4.1 million. That's what Mr. DeHany said we might need. We don't necessarily have to spend that much, but I think he wants to appropriate that so that the fund is there, but it could cost less. I would hope it would cost less. But it really is a spectacular spot, and we want to make sure, if you're going to build a beautiful building, you're going to want a good architect, and you've got to have a place to park. We have a parking shortage down at the Oceanfront. That's one of the biggest problems we have is parking. And if you have a spectacular park and you can't have the people from District 10, District 7, District 2, all over the city, they can't ride their bikes down there. So you've got to have a parking garage. It's really going to be necessary for everybody, and you can build it so that there's a place for the surfboarders.
Okay, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So admittedly, I was absent this day when council got the presentation. So the question I have, and I don't know that I can get an answer in this meeting, but how we got to the $4 million number, my concern is we can put that aside and then, oh, thank you y'all for coming up. And I mean, my guess would be we would spend it. So ideally, it'd be great to save some money, but I just, I'd like to further understand that number for this design. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Kirschman and Chad Morris, the Parks and Recreation engineer will come and give a little bit more insight on this. But I recall when we presented this to council and council selected this option, there were multiple different appropriation needs, and this was the first initial design request, and there's probably going to be other more additional funds requested to complete design for a construction-ready document. Construction is, design is typically 15% to 20% of the total budget cost of a project. So if you got a 50, 60 million dollar project, you're kind of looking around at eight, nine million dollar cost for a design, but Mr. Kirschman will explain more.
That's correct. So one of the things we talked about doing for Rudy Loop was start immediately. Years ago, you'd be looking at 10% to 15% of your total project costs going to design, permitting, engineering, and construction drawings, and then you go to construction. Chad, would you agree we're looking at 20% to 25% now? You said 15%, 20%. Looking at at least 20%, if not up to 25% of your total project cost going towards design, engineering, permitting, and construction drawings. We took that amount, we said, well, 4 million will get us a design firm on board so we can start this fiscal year. Any money left from that 4 million is just going to roll into engineering and construction drawings. That's going to be another appropriation, and then whatever's left over from that will roll into the construction funds that will be needed the following year from that. So this is just to get us started on working with a company, a design firm that builds world-class iconic public spaces, get them on board, do the public input, probably going to be at least a year and a half long process to come to a design that is eventually approved by council. At that point, we'd probably have a pretty good understanding based on the design, what the true construction cost will be. About 4 million gets us started. There could be money left over that would just roll into the next phase of engineering and construction drawings.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, let's go with Chris and then Worth.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschman. Question that's been posed by the public, have we actually identified what we want to design?
No, that would be done through the public input process once the design firm is on board.
Again, to clarify, council is going to determine what we design. Right, this is council selection, so there'll be public input, and then options will be bringing back to this body, and this body makes this decision.
Okay, Worth.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kirschman, thank you. So can you go describe a little bit more, what is engineering and because we need a survey, we need site conditions, we have easements, we have utilities, you have existing conditions there of Virginia state-owned roads, so a lot of work can be done or should be done for engineering just to get where we are today with existing site conditions.
That's everything we need. More, I'm going to call up Chad Morris, who is the expert in that does this for Parks and Recreation and lands our planning and design division, and Chad can talk more about that. But everything he says is correct, and we have none of that right now.
That's correct, Mr. Councilman Remick. We're looking at, in this preliminary concept planning and design phase, there's some investigation work that needs to be done, this topographic survey. We know there's utility roadways there that are in play there, and all those considerations have effect to the ultimate cost of the project. So we need to get some of that information early, and that's part of this first phase in the preliminary planning and design portion.
And Mr. Mayor, just to clarify as well, this will be put out through a procurement process, so we're not necessarily saying this is just going to be a word to somebody. The market's going to tell us if we're right on this price, if what we're seeing from all the bids that we've put out to bid is that this is kind of where we likely expect that we're going to land from, the procurements that we've been putting out of late.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Okay, at this point, thank you. Let me just say this before we open the vote. You know, Rudy Loop is by far one of the most pristine properties on the East Coast right now. We can all agree on that. And for 30 years, both Rudy Loop at plus and, you know, the old dome site, you know, sat dormant. We got their dome site rolling right now, and now is time to, at least after, you know, much discussion over a long time, at least get things going. And I remember a while ago when we first put out the, you know, the RFP to get the information and the ideas, you know, one of the, you know, criteria that I recommended that a lot of folks went along with, the essential, it had to have green space and it had to enhance surfing and fishing. But then the other thing, we also had some other ideas, you know, some people want a complete park, other people think we really have to have a parking deck, some people saying, well, if we have a parking deck to help pay for it, perhaps we can put some business entities in there. And, you know, but once again, if people have an idea, you know, I personally like to see, you know, is a skate park or something there, but that's my focus group of one. So once again, there's still a plethora of possibilities that we can turn this into a win-win for a lot of people. But once again, I think at least getting the ball rolling now and, you know, and, you know, I think would be at least in our best interest. And then once again, I think the critical thing about, you know, what we're doing here is, you know, seeking further public engagement on what goes there. So, but once again, at this point, I think, you know, let's move forward and, you know, but once again, I think, you know, if we can have the true destination of getting things going everywhere from the sports center to convention center to vibe district, Atlantic Park to Rudy Loop, we're going to have a destination not only for our tourists, but for the people that live right here on Virginia Beach. And with that, can we open the vote? Thank you.
The vote is open. By a vote of seven to two, you have approved the ordinance.
Okay, and now we're going to move on to planning, and item number one, Whitney W. Elliott, Marion, Mancall, Robin Mancall, Whitney Elliott, Matthew E. Mancall.
Mayor, that was on consent.
Oh, that was on consent? No.
Yes, sir.
My boo-boo. Okay. All righty, now I guess we're on to item number six, Ashley Guler for a conditional use permit, raise short-term rental at 921 Pacific Avenue, Unit B, District 5.
Mayor, the applicant Ashley Guler is not present. Steve, is she still on? So she is on WebEx, however, she did not register with my office. There's a two-part process, it's very clear, but she is on WebEx, I'm aware of it, so I feel like I need to let you guys know that.
Okay, let's, yeah, okay. Chris, pardon?
Can we put a motion on the table?
Yeah.
So this is in District 5. It's in the resort where we do a lot of short-term rentals. This is a building we've done a lot of short-term rentals. I haven't heard any issues about it or any of the ones that we've issued permits in the past, so I'd like to move for approval.
Okay, do we have a second on this?
Second.
Okay, discussion, anybody? Chris?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Dyer. I have just some concerns about our approach to the short-term rentals, and I emailed staff for clarification because on September 19th this year, we denied an applicant in the overlay district, and I didn't understand why we denied him. And so I did a little research, and I won't be voting for any of these short-term rentals that are consistent with that denial, but for the public, in fiscal year 2022 and 23, the city council approved 49 short-term rental applications and denied zero. Fiscal year 2324, approved 11 and denied two. And so what I did, because I believe our votes have the ability to set precedence, is I went through these three and compared them to the one we denied, and there are some differences and there are some similarities. Again, 60 approved in the last two years, two denied under this council. The first observation when comparing all three is I believe we need to be consistent, and then we have to maybe look at the parking issue. With young children, we're not fans of utilizing STRs, we typically stay at a hotel, but I just can't imagine paying to stay at a short-term rental and then having to walk a quarter of a mile with my family and my luggage or go out at night if I have a guest that wants to come visit me at my short-term rental family, and they have to walk a quarter of a mile, and that's inconsistent. So with these three applications, but I'll start with the one we're looking at. They were cited. They were cited for short-term use, usage without a permit in May of this year. The other applicant that we denied was not. The advertisement for this property was changed to reflect the 30-night minimum stay. However, reviews for this property show that the location was still being utilized as a short-term rental per the number of reviews for the months of August and September. I believe it was just a couple of weeks ago, we talked about the need for compliance and enforcement, and so it appears we are rewarding an individual that broke the rules, did not follow the process, and now is seeking to correct that action. Again, I have no problem with short-term rentals, but we should be consistent. And that's just for this one. Should I hold my comments for the next two, Mayor?
Pardon?
I said, should I hold my comments for the next two, or can I continue?
Yeah, no, we can only do one thing at a time.
Okay, those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Okay, how about your motion for approval? Okay, votes open.
Vote is open. By a vote of eight to one, you have approved the application.
Okay, District 6, next one, The Fountain Hill LLC.
Madam Clark, is there any speakers on...
Yes, Eddie Bradon.
Yes, Mr. Bradon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Eddie Bradon, represent Fountain LLC on this application, and now that I have some idea what Councilman Taylor may want to speak about, let me try to help this along a little bit. This redevelopment involves a property that will have eight, and it's a very good redevelopment adjacent to 305 34th Street at the corner of Pacific and 34th Street. It's an office complex, and this project will have eight onsite parking places plus six garage spaces onsite. Only two of those six spaces count towards the parking requirement because they're in two-car garages rather than one-car garages, and the one-car garages don't count. There is onsite parking on 34th Street, and there will be two additional leased parking spaces in the city garage. The, and again, there is also parking on 34th Street, and none of that counts, but it is all public parking. And in the, and I thought this had been corrected, in the staff report, and maybe it wasn't, there was some reference to this having been used as a short-term rental. That is absolutely untrue. John Napier, who's one of the principals with the Hanger Law Firm, which is one of the owners of the property, has absolutely confirmed, and staff doesn't disagree with this, that while it was put out on one of the social, Airbnb or whatever, it was only for 30-day rental, and that's all that has ever happened with this property, is there was some 30-day rentals, never a short-term rental. And the other thing I wanted to mention, there's a typographical error in condition number one. This was recommended for approval by your planning commission, by your staff, no opposition whatsoever from anyone, but that number one, the units aren't identified correctly. It should be under 307 34th Street Units A and C, and the condition says A and B, and then 34th and a half-street units B and D. B and D, and they both say A and B and A and B, and it's A and C for 307 34th Street and B and D for 34th and a half, 307 34th and a half-street. All the conditions are acceptable. Property has not been used as a short-term rental, and there is actually plenty of parking, but we don't count one-car garages, and we only count one space in two-car garages, and thus there are two spaces that are being also leased in the city garage, and I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Any questions on this? Okay.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for approval of the application.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Yeah, Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, consistent with all four applications, planning, recommended approval, 60 approved, two denied. And Attorney Bordeaux, if you are indeed accurate, then we have to look to our staff because we have to depend on the reports that we get. So I'm going to read for the public what I was given to read. While on-street parking is allowed along this street on 34th Street, the zoning ordinance requires the parking requirement for short-term rentals to be met through the use of off-street parking, and then we're giving a map, we're given a map, and it shows the distance. Once again, can only go by the information we're given. The previous dwelling that has since been demolished was operating as a short-term rental illegally, period. The property is being redeveloped and seeking to obtain the proper permits to operate the short-term rentals legally, period. According to the applicant, this property was not used for short-term rental purposes prior to July 1st, 2018. The last bullet in the report we were given, which is the only thing I can go by, known short-term rental activity as of September 21st, 2023. Again, 60 approved, two denied. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? The votes open. Yes.
Mayor, can just make a couple of comments, because this applies probably to the next application as well. So as a representative of District 6, also District 5, this council, this body, has approved of short-term rentals with a conditional use permit, approval from this body in the overlay district of the OR, and this address in the next application fits that criteria. I did talk with the applicant about parking, they're trying to work out onsite parking with adjacent office building, but this is a commercial area, and so this council member has spoken before about supporting STRs in certain areas like the resort on Atlantic Avenue and Pacific Avenue and in commercial streets, like 21st Street as you enter the resort and 22nd Street as you exit the resort, which is the next application. This is in a commercial area, there's no opposition, so that's why I support this application. Thank you.
Okay, votes open.
Councilwoman Wood, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. Yes, ma'am, thank you. By a vote of eight to one, you have approved this application.
Okay, and the final application is Tracy R. McGlin and Michael McGlin for conditional use permit at 523 22nd Street, District 6.
Michael McGlin is the applicant.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I'm Michael L. McGlin. I'm speaking for myself and my wife, Tracy R. McGlin. We're seeking approval for a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 523 22nd Street. The property is in the OR district. It is with a row of townhouses. There are 10 there. Eight of them are currently, I believe, eight of them are currently approved for short-term rental. We have complied with the City of Virginia Beach's requirements for a short-term rental and with the City Planning Commission to include obtaining and leasing two additional parking spots at the 22nd Street parking garage, or, excuse me, the 25th Street parking garage. There are two parking spots on location, which are just a few feet away from the front of the house. We have done our due diligence. We've talked to our neighbors. The neighbors, both to the right and to the left, have provided supporting letters of recommendation, and then a neighbor immediately behind the property has also provided a letter of recommendation. So again, we seek your approval for this short-term rental.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, Worth?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. McGlin. I move for approval of the application.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Any other discussion? Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. This one is very similar to the two that we denied. In fact, bullet four under your application is almost verbatim. The property lies within the RPP boundary. Where parking during the evening and overnight hours is limited. Based on this, a condition is recommended that would prohibit the occupants of the STR from parking on the street during the restricted hours. You're roughly about the same distance. The difference between this and the one we denied, which most likely you'll be approved tonight, sir, so you probably don't have to worry about anything, but I want to try to maintain some type of consistency, and I played sports 60 for two, is pretty good. The department received a complaint regarding illegal use of this property as a short-term rental. The area inspector conducted an inspection on August 18th, 2023, and it was determined that the applicant previously advertised and rented this property on a short-term basis. To your understanding, is that true, Mr. McGlin?
August 18th of '23?
Yes, sir.
We did not own the property at that point, sir.
Okay, Mr. Manager, hopefully we can look into these discrepancies. According to the applicant, this property was not used for short-term rentals prior to July 1st, 2018. Known short-term rental activity as of September 19th, 2023. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Votes open.
By a vote of eight to one, this application has been approved.
Okay, that reached a point where there are no appointments. Is there any unfinished business? Any new business? Thank you all, we are adjourned.